Recording in progress.
Good evening. We will call the Auburn City Council Meeting for Monday, June 16th, 2025 to order, and we will begin with a land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge the federally recognized Muckleshoot Indian Tribe, the ancestral keepers of the land we are gathered on today. We thank them for their immense contributions to our state and local history, culture, economy, and identity as Washingtonians. The Auburn City Council Meeting will be held both in person and virtually, and if you would all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. And Hannah, will you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor Rakes.
Here.
Councilmember Ammer.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Excused.
Councilmember Sturgis.
Here.
Councilmember Clinton Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Excused. All right. We have one proclamation this evening, so I will go over to the podium. And I would ask Keisha to come forward. Keisha works in our Office of Equity and is doing an amazing job as a one-person team right now, it feels like, with just a little bit of assistance from some temporary team members. So, thank you very much. She just coordinated the Juneteenth Flag Raising and has coordinated the Pride Flag Raising, as well as Pride at the Market and Juneteenth, which will be this Sunday, the 22nd, at Les Cove in conjunction with the Auburn Farmers Market. Mayor's Proclamation. Whereas Juneteenth, celebrated annually on June 19th, commemorates the announcement of the freedom of enslaved people in Texas following the Emancipation Proclamation and the end of the Civil War. And whereas the delivery of General Order Number Three by General Gordon Granger on that day quickly turned June 19th into an annual day for celebration and remembrance known as Emancipation Day, starting in Texas and over the years carried nationwide by descendants of the freed African-Americans. And whereas in 1980, Texas became the first state to designate Juneteenth a state holiday with most all of the 50 states eventually following suit. And in 2021, President Joe Biden signed the bill to make Juneteenth a federal holiday. And whereas Juneteenth, as it is now known, is one of the nation's oldest national days of remembrance and has been recognized for over 150 years as America's Second Independence Day and is receiving greater attention as it earns its rightful place in the American story. And whereas Juneteenth is a day to recognize the contributions and achievements that Black Americans have made in our city, state, and country, and commit to working together to ensure that equal access and opportunities towards equality continue. And now, therefore, I, Nancy Backus, Mayor of the City of Auburn, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2025, to be Juneteenth, 2025, in the City of Auburn, and urge residents to reflect on the ongoing cause of freedom for Black Americans and reaffirm our commitment to stamp out racism within our communities and institutions in securing freedom and equality for all, dated the 16th day of June, 2025. Keisha, I'll hand this to you with appreciation. Is there anything that you would like to say?
No.
Nope? All right. Thank you very much. All right, Hannah, do we have any agenda modifications this evening?
No, Your Honor, we do not.
Thank you. We do have a public hearing this evening. It is the public hearing for the 2026 through 2031 Transportation Improvement Program. Ingrid, is there any staff report?
No staff report tonight. This was discussed with the council at the May 27 study session.
Thank you. Counsel, before we begin, do you have any questions? All right. I will open the public hearing for the 2026 through 2031 Transportation Improvement Program. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the Transportation Improvement Program or TIP? Please come forward, give your name, city of residence for the record. Please limit comments to three minutes.
I don't need three minutes. Virginia Howgan, Auburn. And I'm speaking for a lot of people I know. Just make us some better roads. Not wider, not longer, not brand-new, but repaired properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the Transportation Improvement Program for 2026 through 2031? Right, seeing and hearing none, I will close the public hearing for the 2026 through 2031 Transportation Improvement Program. And we will move to audience participation. This is a place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to the City Council on any issues. And you can participate in person or via written comment that are submitted in advance, or with the proper advance notice online as well. Hannah, do we have any written comments or online comments this evening?
We have no one online, but the City Clerk's office, we did receive written comments from James Delay, Elder Robert S. Roman Montague, and Mark Selich, all of which were forwarded to you for review prior to tonight's meeting.
Thank you. All right, we will move to in-person comments. Is there anyone who would like to provide public comment this evening? Please come forward, give your name and city of residence for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. And the countdown clock is right there in case you're looking for one.
No worries. Thank you. My name is David Wright. City of residence is Tacoma, but I work here in Auburn. Good evening, members of the council. I work for the King County Library System or the Auburn Library, and you can expect to see me in a couple of weeks to come by and talk to you about summer reading. But I also serve as the Vice Chair for Auburn's Human Services Committee, and tonight I've come to talk to you about, to speak to you in support of Resolution 5836 to finance the Auburn Resource Center project. Working in the library every day, I see the breadth and depth of need in our community, and I see the challenges people face in navigating the network of resources necessary to set themselves on a path for success. It's challenging for me at times as a person with access to knowledge, resources, and training and finding information to point them in the right direction. So how much more difficult is it for people who want help but lack those advantages? The redevelopment that this resolution would fund will create a comprehensive space easily accessible by a major bus line and in the heart of an area with the greatest need in our community, where Auburn residents actively seeking to improve their lives will be able to go and get the help and services that they need. When Kent, who has done so much to create real, meaningful, and accountable change for our most vulnerable residents, says this is a solid path forward, I believe him. I hope that you will as well and support Resolution 5836. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? Final time. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Please come forward, name and city of residence for the record, and please limit comments to three minutes.
Virginia Howgan, Auburn. I don't know where to start. A new park in Auburn. We have a lot of parks already. We have a great new director. Happy about that. What else? Seventy-seven thousand, I believe, more we need with a postmark to finish the basement. It's a great idea, but seventy-seven thousand dollars is a lot of money. Let's see. Loan guarantee for the Auburn Resource Center project. I understand why we have it. I've never been against it. But three million dollars is a lot of money. I go to the grocery store. I see people trying to get out of Safeway with groceries they can't afford to pay for. Sometimes they get caught and sometimes they don't. Los Angeles, California. I checked. The mayor down there makes a lot more than our mayor, a lot more. And she had to defend herself because the police was not controlling some protests that simply got out of hand. I grew up in Southern California. I have been to my hometown. I see the crime where I grew up. It's awful. But I don't have to worry about it because I'm old and I can't afford to go back to visit anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak during public comment? Yes, sir, please come forward, give your name and city of residence for the record, and please limit comments to three minutes. That's a great tie, by the way.
Thank you. Used to be my daughter's prom dress.
Nice.
She said, "You're wearing my dresses now, huh, Dad?" And I just said, "Well, I paid for it. It's really mine anyway." But good evening. My name is Elder Roman Montague from here in Lincoln temporarily. Two things. One, I submitted earlier apartment complex on Auburn Boulevard, just to provide an update. Work in progress, still needs more done. I submitted the paperwork on that. Hope people have had a chance to review that and really want to appreciate the City Council and the Director of Community Development, as well as Code Enforcement, to really make improvements on that apartment complex for the tenants there. So that's appreciated. My wife and I have been serving in Auburn areas as senior missionaries for the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints, and we've had a wonderful time here, working primarily with the Marshallese people, but community members as well. And I submitted an email there, kind of outlining some of the things we may all do. And I'm heavy into accountability and responsibility, so I felt like we needed to account for what we've done here for the city. So, and again, this is about service, not about us. Three hundred and fifty hours of voluntary service to the senior center, one hundred and seventy-five hours or so to the Auburn Spirit Fest, with the help of the council and the mayor recognizing Spirit Fest, we're able to gain another about eleven hundred dollars in donations, which was really nice. Been able to find housing for a couple of families in need. One we've really been happy with is getting a woman who was in a psychiatric facility into a community-based home, which was really helpful. Working with some individuals, as a mental health clinician myself, being able to work with some people to improve their families, improve their relationships, manage their behavior better. Helping people with their taxes, housing, health, dental care, getting their kids through school, helping them get access to FAFSA and Pell Grants to get into college and things like that. Really proud of that. What I wanted to say was just thank you for letting us be a part of your community for the last fifteen months. We have thoroughly enjoyed it, thoroughly just had a marvelous experience. We're returning back to California, to the heat, not looking forward to that, to the brown and the yellow and giving up the green, not looking forward to that, but seeing our families and friends again. And from the bottom of our hearts, my wife and I just want to say thank you for letting us be here, letting us serve, letting us be a part of the community and participate. Yeah, we're just so appreciative. And God bless each of you and goodwill to you and much success. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your service to our community. And when your email came through, I did forward it immediately to Code Enforcement and to our Director of Community Development, Jason Crum, so they are aware of the updated status.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak? All right, we will move forward. Do we have any correspondence this evening, Hannah?
No, Your Honor.
All right. Thank you. Counsel Ad-Hoc Committee reports. Counsel Ad-Hoc Committee Chairs may report on the status of their Ad-Hoc Council Committee's progress on assigned tasks and may give their recommendation to the City Council if any. We have one Ad-Hoc Committee that has been meeting, that's the Council Rules of Procedure Ad-Hoc. It's chaired by Councilmember Baldwin, but in her absence this evening, I'll ask the Deputy Mayor to provide an update.
Thank you, Mayor. As of today, we have not met again, so there is no update on that committee.
Thank you. All right, we will move to the Consent Agenda. All matters listed on the Consent Agenda are considered by the City Council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda? Deputy Mayor Rakes.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Clinton Taylor.
A second and motion.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Rakes.
The Consent Agenda, let me see, the Consent Agenda includes minutes from June 2nd, 2025 City Council Meeting, June 9th, 2025 Study Session Meeting, and Claims and Bounties that are listed.
And Project CP 1612.
And, I didn't get to that page. Oh. And Project CP 1612.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council or any items that you wish to have considered separately? All those in favor of the Consent Agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Consent Agenda passes. We have no unfinished business or new business this evening, so we'll move to ordinances. Ordinance Number 6977, an ordinance relating to the zoning code amending Chapter 18.04, Sections 18.02.067, 18.07.020, 18.23.030, 18.25.020, 18.31.130, 18.31.160, 18.46A.070, 18.52.020, and creating new Section 18.31.165 of the Auburn City Code. Is there a motion? Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve ordinance Number 6977, please.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Sturgis.
I second.
Thank you. Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance updates Auburn's zoning ordinance Title 18 to ensure consistency with the land use and housing elements of the comprehensive plan in recent Washington State housing laws.
Thank you. Counsel, are there any questions or comments? All those in favor of ordinance Number 6977, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Ordinance Number 6977 passes. Moving to Resolutions. Resolution Number 5821, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement amongst the participating jurisdictions within the Green River, Duwamish River, and Central Puget Sound watersheds within the geographic planning area of Water Resources Inventory Area 9 or RIA 9. Is there a motion? Councilmember, Councilmember Sturgis.
I move to adopt Resolution 5821.
Thank you. Is there a second? I was assuming that Councilmember Ammer was going to do that since she's on RIA, so.
I second, Mayor.
Did you second that?
Second, yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Sturgis.
Yes, this motion is the adoption of Resolution Number 5821 that will demonstrate Auburn's continued participation in support of the Water Resources Inventory Area 9, regional salmon recovery, ecological conservation, and long-term watershed planning efforts.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? All those, oh, Councilmember Ammer, did you have a question?
No, I went to say aye.
You were just getting ready to vote. You were anxious to vote. All right. All those in favor of Resolution Number 5821, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Resolution 5821 passes. Resolution Number 5833, a resolution amending the City of Auburn fee schedule. Is there a motion? Councilmember Clinton Taylor. It's one of the Taylors.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we adopt Resolution 5833.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
I second that, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Clinton Taylor.
Thank you. Resolution 5833 would amend the 2025 fee schedule to reflect the changes to the traffic impact fees and park impact fees needed to comply with recent state legislation.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council? All those in favor of Resolution Number 5833, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Resolution Number 5833 passes. Excuse me. Resolution Number 5835, a resolution approving and adopting the 2026 through 2031 Transportation Improvement Program of the City of Auburn. Is there a motion? Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 5835, please.
Thank you. Is there a second? Deputy Mayor Rakes.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. This, the Transportation Improvement Plan is a multi-year planning document for the development of transportation facilities within the city. It's RCW 35.77.010, requires it to be amended by June 30th each year.
Thank you. Questions or comments, council? All those in favor of Resolution Number 5835, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Resolution Number 5835 passes. Resolution Number 5836, a resolution authorizing the authorized officer to file a Section 108 loan guarantee application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to finance the Auburn Resource Center project. Is there a motion? Councilmember Ammer.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 5836.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Clinton Taylor.
I second that.
Thank you. Councilmember Ammer.
First of all, we lucky had the Director Kent Hayes present to us last study session. This is, we are seeking loan to improve our Resource Center, which serve main hub offering important service for a lot of resident and low-income people here.
Thank you. Questions or comments, council? Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. Kent Hay and his team have put together a lot of work behind this. I'm excited to hear more and the acceptance of this, just because he's got a vision and it's for our community. And yeah, his hard work doesn't go unnoticed, so I'm excited that our community will have a place to go when they are needed, when they have resources needed. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? All right. All those in favor of Resolution Number 5836, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Resolution Number 5836 passes. And Councilmember Taylor, I agree with you, the vision of Director Hay and the work that he and his team do, this is a much-needed resource in our community, and I am excited that we are going to be moving forward with this. Thank you. All right. Resolution Number 5837, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Auburn and the State of Washington Department of Commerce to accept and expend a direct appropriation for development of a new park in downtown Auburn. Is there a motion? Councilmember Clinton Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we adopt Resolution 5837.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Ammer.
I second, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Clinton Taylor.
Thank you. Resolution 5837 would authorize the mayor to sign a contract with the Department of Commerce for $250,060 to go toward construction of the new downtown park next to the theater.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, the vision of our team is outstanding and the, I'm so excited to have something that's going to be next to the theater. I just envision more people coming downtown, seeing something at the theater, just hanging out in the park. This is just something that's so welcome and so needed for our downtown. So, thank you to the team for the development and the ideology for it all.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Sturgis.
I just want to add, you know, it's important for us as community members to realize that the city does have a comprehensive, like, business plan that we would know in, you know, corporate America or in our day jobs. And so, you know, as we vote on these different resolutions or have these different agenda topics, sometimes at specific meetings, it can feel like it's a one-off, but they are prioritized. And what I'm learning as a new council member is that all of these are in order of priority over a five-to-10-year span. They're planned thoughtfully and budgeted for, and also, the city is managing the day-to-day needs as they arise. And so, both can happen and both are happening. And when there's frustration that we're spending a certain amount on a park versus other needs, that's just not the case. And so, it's important for us to educate ourselves as community members. This has been a great learning for me, so thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? All those in favor of Resolution Number 5837, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Resolution Number 5837 passes, and I too agree with that. It's going to be a great addition to our downtown. We have had residents asking for, I'll say decades, to have a park downtown. And so, to see this come to fruition in the next year or two is going to be very exciting. All right. Resolution Number 5838, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and administer an agreement accepting a grant from the Federal Highway Administration relating to Project Number CP 2505, Lake Tap's Parkway Street Lighting. Is there a motion? Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
It's all the public works tonight. Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 5838.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Ammer.
I second, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution authorizes an agreement to accept and utilize Federal Highway Administration or FHWA grant funds in the amount of $1,300,000 for Project Number CP 2505, Lake Tap's Parkway Street Lighting, which will install a new street light system or lighting system where no lighting currently exists between Sumner-Taps Highway and 182nd Avenue East.
Thank you. Questions or comments? All those in favor of Resolution Number 5838, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Resolution Number 5838 passes. Resolution Number 5841, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Auburn and the Cascade Bicycle Club to accept and expend grant funds for the operation of city bicycle programs. Is there a motion? Councilmember Clinton. Councilmember Clinton Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. I recommend we adopt Resolution 5841.
Thank you. Is there a second? Deputy Mayor Rakes.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from counsel? All those in favor of Resolution number 5841, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. Resolution number 5841 passes. Excuse me. Resolution number 5842, a resolution creating a limited-term position of recreation assistant bicycle programs to assist in the operation of city bicycle programs. Is there a motion? Councilmember Clinton Taylor.
I recommend that we adopt Resolution 5842.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
I second that, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Clinton Taylor. Oops, your microphone.
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution would create the limited-term position of recreation assistant bicycle program that was created to operate the city's bicycle program, which shall be funded by the Cascade Bicycle Club bicycle grant for the period of July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2026.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from counsel? All those in favor, excuse me, of Resolution number 5842, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Resolution number 5842 passes. Counsel, we do have need for a closed session this evening. The City Council will adjourn into a closed session per RCW 42.30.140B for a discussion on a collective bargaining agreement. The estimated time for the closed session is 20 minutes. We will return at 7... I'm going to say 7:51. Senior Staff Attorney Jones, Human Resources Director Martenson, Assistant Director Barber, and Chief of Police Collier will be required to attend. There is anticipation of an action after the closed session. We will recess into a closed session.
All right, we will call the Auburn City Council meeting back in session. And as mentioned before going to the closed session, there is action following our closed session. And so this is Resolution number 5843, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Auburn, Washington authorizing the mayor to execute a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Auburn and the Auburn Police Guild for 2025 through 2027. Is there a motion? Deputy Mayor Rakes?
I move to adopt Resolution number 5843.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Tracy Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. I second.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Rakes?
The city has reached a tentative agreement with Auburn Police Guild for a successive collective bargaining agreement covering the period of January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2027. The agreement addresses wage competitiveness, specialty premiums, employee benefits, vehicle use, and recruiting strategies to enhance public safety operations.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor of Resolution number 5843, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. Resolution number 5843 passes. And while that felt very quick out here on the floor, I want you to understand, council, I know you do, and share my appreciation with the Guild members, the Auburn Police Department Guild members, our negotiation team that included Candace Martenson, Erin Barber, Chief Cawyer, Assistant Chief Betts, and also a special thank you to Finance Director Thomas for all of their work to ensure that this is a very fair and equitable contract, that it presents and represents our appreciation for the work that our law enforcement does for the City of Auburn, keeps us very competitive, and as Director Martenson said, she's looking forward to changing the salaries tomorrow morning on the recruiting materials for police officers. And I will ask her at 8:30 tomorrow morning if she's got that done yet, because it is very important for us to be able to attract and retain excellent officers in our community, because our residents deserve that. And with that, thank you very much. Excellent job by everyone involved. Council, thank you for supporting this contract. It took several months to get here, but as I understand, it was a very professional and very respectful negotiation, and that is not always the case with negotiations. So once again, I am very proud of everyone involved in the process. All right. Typically, we go to mayor and council member reports. I'm going to ask, Deputy Mayor, do you have a report this evening?
No, I don't, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Clinton Taylor?
No, Mayor.
Councilmember Tracy Taylor?
I'll save it for next time, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Lisa Sturgis?
I will save it for next time.
Thank you very much. I will do that as well. Oh, Councilmember Hannah Ammer, do you have anything?